Thank you to my desk.
Oh, very light.
Can you grab it, Miranda?
Oh, yeah, sure. Right here.
Let's, uh, he was closer.
No, no, that was fine.
Thank you.
Hi.
How you doing, Al?
Hi.
You wanna keep one?
Yeah.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, sure.
Are you all set, my friend? Just give me the thumbs up when you're ready to start. Okay. Everybody ready?
Good.
I'll return the meeting back to order. We had, we started the meeting with an executive session. Um, I would ask if you'd stand, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Uh, next on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to make a comment not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Oh, please.
Good evening. So I had two comments tonight. I know I've been here many times, um, discussing the issue of discrimination that we have with the two policies that pertain to vaccinated students and unvaccinated students. Um, and I know that there's definitely been some disagreement that there's people on the board or the superintendent don't agree that what is happening is, in fact, discrimination. So I just wanted to bring to your attention a court case that came up in Oklahoma. While it doesn't affect Massachusetts, the important thing is what the judge is saying. And, um, I learned a little something too, so I wanted to bring it to you because I didn't know, about this Fourteenth Amendment clause. So anyways, basically, families sued a school district who imposed two policies in which vaccinated students did not have to quarantine for a close contact, but any unvaccinated student that was still healthy did. And the judge put in a temporary restraining order because he, now, this is a very high bar to set to find a temporary restraining order or on this action. Um, and basically what he's saying is that the policy of removing unvaccinated, yet healthy children from the classroom provided no benefit in slowing the spread. The policy did, however, inflict tremendous harm on some of those students. The judge said the policy is irrational because it failed to balance any of the known dangers associated with quarantining children against the specter of asymptomatic spread. He found the school failed to qua- justify the unequal treatment between students who were vaccinated versus those who were not. He said there is no reasonable conceivable, conceivable state of facts that can justify the differential treatment between vaccinated and unvaccinated students at issue here. He said that the facts don't hold because vaccinated students can still get and spread this virus. So there is no justifiable reason for creating two policies. He says, "When the pandemic began, not enough was known about this virus, and the officials were acting in good faith, but as more is known about the virus, heavy burdens on constitutional liberties, especially those which overburden vulnerable children, warrant thoughtful judicial review." And that the administrators, while they must make difficult decisions, even in conjunction with the Board of Health Guidance, must take this guidance they receive from health officials and craft protocols for their students to avoid offending the Constitution. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because while I'm repeatedly told this is not a discrimination issue, it absolutely is a discrimination issue. When you have two policies that offer some students, a certain class of students, certain privileges that other students don't have access to, and it becomes punitive because they are denied access to their education or are forced to maybe participate in a test in order to stay and have their education, that's discrimination. Furthermore, there are children who do not vaccinate for their religious reasons. So beyond that, you are now targeting a protected class of people. So that was part of this where these, they couldn't find necessarily a class of people. This is where that Fourteenth Amendment, um, equal protection clause comes in. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I have been screaming this since August, that this is discrimination, having two policies. Now, we haven't moved to that eighty percent threshold like some of the other schools where masks are allowed for some and others are forced to wear it, but your policy in which you force healthy children to quarantine because they are not vaccinated is discrimination. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing I want to bring up was this A, this response. I think we're all probably surprised that we actually got a response from Dussie regarding the letter we sent. I'm not sure that it actually answered any of the questions. We sent a lot of questions. It only kind of addressed one of them, and it was actually complete gibberish. I've spent quite a bit of time going through this letter. I know it's hard for the people who are listening who don't have access to the letter to understand. The first, it, so it's only responding to the eighty percent vaccination threshold, and you would think that this was going to explain their rationale for eighty percent, uh, threshold, but it doesn't really. It has some, a couple of hyperlinks. Some of these sentences don't even make sense. So I know I had asked Mr. Young if he could explain it. He hadn't had an opportunity to look at it yet. But one of these sentences, it says that, "In addition to vaccination, which is critically important for preventing SARS-CoV-ideisease and strongly encouraged and supported for all eligible individuals, immunity that results from prior infraction also contributes to protection against severe disease." So that sentence kind of makes it sound like, you know, natural immunity kind of helps, uh, vaccine-induced immunity. However, if you actually click on that link that they're supporting this statement with, it actually brings you to an op-ed article, which is interesting because I was looking for some sort of science that would back their vaccination rate, which I didn't see. That op-ed article did link you to a study that is not peer-reviewed or published yet. But basically, what the study is saying is that natural immunity is thirteen times more effective than vaccine-induced immunity. They have studies coming out of Israel, so there's a lot of data coming out of Israel. So it doesn't even support that sentence, which puts vaccination in front of natural immunity. Really, natural immunity is really what's providing the most robust, um, prevention of disease. So it's kind of strange how they, how they write these things. Um, it discusses, "Estimates from immunity from prior infection within the state of Massachusetts vary from nine point four percent of residents to twenty-one point five percent of sixteen-to-nineteen-year-olds," which is kind of a random statement. If you're gonna give a range, I'm not sure why you've switched from residents to sixteen-to-nineteen-year-olds and why that's just the one age range that we're flip-flopping between. So that really doesn't make sense. And if you click on those hyperlinks, you can't actually find those data points within those hyperlinks. So I don't know where that data's coming from. It's not really clear to me. It talks about, "Natural immunity may be substantially higher in some districts in Massachusetts." By some districts, when you click on that hyperlink, they mean one district, and that one district is Chelsea, which is a very small, densely populated city, and it does not reflect, um, many of the communities in Massachusetts. But they say that they have a lot more natural immunity than others, which is interesting because they didn't compare it to anybody else. And then this sentence didn't even make sense. I'm just gonna read it just so everybody hears it. "Using these estimates, protection against severe disease based acquired due to immunity from natural infection is estimated to increase the proportion of individuals with protection against severe disease by one point nine percent to eighty-one point nine percent using the lower estimates. Using the published estimates of twenty-one point five percent, the proportion increases by four point three percent to eighty-four point three percent." I don't even understand that sentence. It's not even grammatically correct. None of these data points were in any of the links that they shared. And it doesn't substantiate where this eighty percent is coming from. Nowhere, in here. I'm not really sure. So, um, I would love, I know you guys didn't have an opportunity to put this on the agenda this time, but I was hoping that next time you could analyze it and maybe make it make sense for me because this is not making sense. If this is where we're getting our guidance from, we need to reflect on who's giving us guidance because this isn't making any sense. This eighty percent is an arbitrary number. It's not based in science. It's not based in facts. Nothing, nothing in this letter is useful, um, other than supporting that, um, these are arbitrary decisions, they're meant to be punitive, and they can't even back their own information. So, that's all I want to share.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comment? Seeing no one, I'll move on. Reports from members of the school community. Anyone in the school, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sure. Uh, I just, um, I guess just wanted to say, as one member, I was also disappointed, um, by the responses, and I think the key items for me that were either ignored or, you know, I don't know, were the, um, the, the kind of, almost, you know, pseudo-discrimination pieces about vaccinated versus unvaccinated, testing. Um, I, I don't understand why we didn't get a response to that, and I would, I would love to, um, if we talk about this at the next meeting, to suggest that we respond, um, with more clarification on those things.
Any other members? Seeing no one, then I'll turn it over to you, Natalia.
So for this week, starting with the MECC, this Friday, the MECC is having a bingo for books and a bake sale event. They have a good number of families who are planning on attending. This should be a fun event. Next week, they're having a spirit week with a different winter and holiday theme each day. The kids and staff are looking forward to the vacation and holidays and hope that 2022 brings some normalcy. For the MKG, the MKG is finishing up a week of the school store and town meetings. They are looking forward to their holiday spirit week. They will be having cookies with Santa this Friday. And lastly, the MKG would like to wish their Middleborough community a Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. For the HBB, the HBB just wrapped up their first round of after-school clubs for the year. They had great participations, great participation in their clubs this fall and are looking forward to the next round of offerings coming up in January. Parents should be on the lookout for signups as all clubs are filled on a first-come, first-served basis, first-served basis, sorry. They also just completed the School Lastic Book Fair and Holiday. They want to thank all of the volunteers and parents who came to make both events a huge success. Lastly, they're excited that they're, about their new Husky mascot that the PTA recently purchased. When the students get back from break, they will be having a contest to come up with a name. For Nichols Middle School, winter sports have just begun at NMS, and the boys and girls basketball team had their first game yesterday. Congratulations to the girls' team for earning their first win of the season. The eighth graders recently went on their field trip to Gillette Stadium, where they engaged in STEM activities relating to engineering. Students participated in hands-on helmet design challenge. Nichols Middle School Student Council organized a spirit week, which is beginning on Monday, December twentieth, and the first day is a pajama day. The next GSA meeting is Monday, December twentieth. Lastly, that Nichols Middle School faculty and staff would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Lastly, for MHS, we want to say congratulations to all actors and crew members of the Temptus on their amazing performance this past weekend. We also wanted to thank, say thank you and congratulations to the MHS Key Club for hosting another successful eat-to-he event. Tomorrow wraps up our holiday canned food drive. All are encouraged to bring in canned goods. Each can is one point for your class in the class cup. Our annual holiday party hosted by MHS Student Council will be hosted next Tuesday, December twenty-first. All students are encouraged to attend. The following clubs will be taking place on Wednesdays at 2:00 PM. Key Club in Room C-149, GSA in Room C-158, and Yes Club in Room C-159. The members of the National Honor Society are offering a program to all students in all classes, allowing for weekly meetings with the one-on-one tutor. This is a free tutoring opportunity. Please re- reach out to Mr. Goldman if you are interested.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Anyone have any questions? Natalia? Natalia, since you have no questions, happy holiday season and enjoy your vacation.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I just realized, I don't have internet, so StreamYard. Is anyone keeping an eye on questions?
So we apologize because it looks like we're having a problem with the internet today. All right. We'll try to work that out. I will turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the committee and members of our audience tonight. Uh, I have some updated COVID numbers for the district and for the community to share with you. Our community cases, uh, as of today, are one hundred and fifty-three, uh, which is the highest number in, in an extended period of time. Uh, that positivity rate now goes from, uh, well, in early November, it was about point zero four, and then it went to point zero six, then point zero seven when we last met, and now that's point one now, point one, a full point one. So that's the numbers in the community as of today, in the Middleborough community. In terms of the district, uh, as of today, Thursday, December sixteenth, we are at forty-seven positive cases in the district, uh, and that includes four at the Early Childhood Center, nine at the Henry B. Berklin School, three at the Mary K. Good Elementary School, twenty at the John T. Nichols Junior Middle School, and eleven at Middleborough High School for a total of forty-seven, forty-seven. So those are the current numbers we have in the district. Uh, I know the state reported today, five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three new COVID-19 cases with thirty new deaths. So I know that was the state number that I saw just before heading to the meeting tonight. So, um, just, that's just an update on where we are in terms of numbers in the community and, uh, numbers in our schools. That's just the numbers. Any questions on that?
Uh, I wondered, do we know, um, has, has there been any evidence in those numbers of any in-school spread, or are we still feeling like this is mostly community spread?
I'm, I'm guessing that there's probably some school spread with contact tracing, and, and there's been some, but there's still obviously community coming from families, et cetera, from outside exposure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So with that, uh, we move on now to Mr. Paul Branigan and his proposed final activities for the Middleborough High School class of 2022. Welcome, Mr. Branigan.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. I wanted to be able to share with you tonight the plan for the senior class. And I just, it was mixed into my papers here. Here it is. Sorry about that. Um, before you is just the proposal for the class of 2022 for their senior activities. As always, we come to you at this time of the year for you to do a review and to, um, give your support to the final events for the senior class. And then based upon your approval, then these will actually be put together into a formal mailing that will go home to all members of the senior class and their families. But what you see here for your consideration is that we would be targeting that the last day for classes for the seniors would be Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, or actually, Monday, May twenty-third would be the last day of classes, where then on the twenty-fourth of May would be actually final exams for the senior class in Blocks One and Two with a dismissal at ten fifteen, as we have done historically in the past. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, excuse me, of May, they would come back into the building. We would reverse the schedule for the seniors, and they would be having Blocks Three and Four in the morning with a ten fifteen AM dismissal. For grades nine, ten, and eleven, it would be a regular school day, as business as usual. On the twenty-sixth of May, it would be considered a makeup day for finals for any seniors who were not able to be part of the exams on the, the actual exam days. And then at seven AM, excuse me, at nine AM would begin a senior meeting, which has been the tradition as for the senior class. And this is where we do an exit survey, and we go over all of the things that they need to be considering in the week ahead. And then we make our way into, um, probably outside somewhere into the quad or something, where we would have yearbook distribution and, um, the senior barbecue. It has also been worked with the senior class officers, the potential that a senior memory night would be held from six to eight PM on that Thursday. You'll notice there's nothing on that Friday, is that Friday becomes a transition day. It is a day that we would use for anything that needs to be made up for seniors in, in any way, shape, or form. It is also the day that we, as a school, are able to finalize everyone, everyone in the senior class and finalize grades and to bring everything to conclusion. It would be a no-school day for seniors. It would be a no-school day for seniors. On Monday, the 30th, obviously Memorial Day, and then the fun begins for their senior week. Tuesday, the 31st, would start with their annual senior breakfast, followed by rehearsals for senior last assembly as well as graduation. And then we have reserved our space for the senior prom on Tuesday, May 31st, at the Grand View in Mendon, Massachusetts, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. So the senior class and the advisors have been working with the venue to allow for us to be able to do our prom there, and it looks like a beautiful space. On Wednesday, June 1st, would be, we would not have any rehearsals of any kind, but that evening would be the scholarship night for the class of 2022. It'd be an invite-only event based upon, invited for the students who are receiving any of the amazing scholarships that our community provides, and that would be 6:00 PM here in the auditorium. On Thursday, June 2nd, would be the senior last assembly graduation rehearsal slated for an 8:00 AM start to about a 10:30 AM conclusion. We would also be distributing caps and gowns that day, which we continue, we plan to continue the tradition of the brand-new gowns that you saw with the class of 2021. And then that would end with the senior last assembly, and that would begin at 6:00 PM here in the high school. It says in your agenda it would be in the stadium, which we would always use that space, but it would be the hope to bring it back into this space here in the auditorium that evening. On Friday, June 3rd, would be their final rehearsal, where we would go through the entire program for graduation. It would also then conclude with the annual senior walk, where we would board buses and they would take our seniors around town to celebrate their journey in Middleborough Public Schools. And that would be their final event for their senior week. And then to cap off, the most important event would be Saturday, June 4th, 2022, with the graduation exercises for the class of 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM in the Middleborough High School Stadium. So we appreciate your consideration. I have been working with Matt Kabush, who's the senior class president. He brought this proposal to the class officers as well as to the advisors, and so they're in full support of the events that you see in front of you. Any questions or anything?
Paul, typically this is what we've done in the past and sort of the same timeframe date-wise.
Absolutely. So it's literally the same week. We always wear Memorial Day hits because we graduate the first Saturday in June. That is the week going in where it becomes the senior week events. And then our senior days of bringing the senior class to conclusion academically falls right before that as well. So it pretty much is right in line with prior years.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify again that, Paul, you, graduation, you're going to have at 6:00 PM in the evening. That's a difference from what it was traditionally for a number, number of years. Can you just explain that to folks?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Lynch. In the old building, that our graduation exercises had always been at 10:30 in the morning, and we always did it in the gym. And that was really done out of tradition, but it was also the fact that we figured we'd need to do that graduation in the morning because by, if you did an afternoon in that gym, it would be cooking by the time you would get in there. Interestingly enough, that when we had been able to do a graduation for the class of 2020, it had been recommended not to do a graduation in the afternoon because of the heat of the turf. So we did it that year in, at 6:00 PM out on the turf, really out of necessity because we weren't able to do something inside. And we found that we absolutely really enjoyed the, the time period of the day or the, just, it was a really nice way to end their, their experience. So when the senior class in 2021 had their opportunity to start planning their event, one of the things that they made it clear is they wanted to do the graduation at the same time, and it's just become a nice way to bring it to conclusion. The turf is much cooler in the, in the, in the, as the sun is setting, and we're able to really utilize that space with the lights and everything else as well.
Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to accept Paul's proposal. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. All I want to say is, having been through this twice, you know, it sounds like a long way out when we do this in December, but it moves rather rapidly, Paul, doesn't it not?
Yes, it does.
So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Branigan. Our next presenter this evening is Jim Hutchinson, James Hutch Hutchinson, who's going to give us a facilities update and where we stand on a number of items with interest regarding our facilities. Welcome, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you.
AKA Hutch.
Just a few quick updates on some things going around the district. With the opening of the new school, it's been a while since I've been up here. We've hired a new groundskeeper, a district groundskeeper, but spends a good portion of his time here at the high school, Mike Scanlon. And then during the offseason, he's throughout the district, custodial coverage. He's working on a pool project right now, doing some painting. So that was a, a great hire, and he's worked out excellent. He really got his hands full here at the high school itself, but right now, we're really taking advantage of his spare time. So we're doing some pool upgrades inside the pool area, bathrooms, painting in the pool itself, pool area itself, and then the bathroom, new bathroom fixtures. At the old high school, two years prior to closing, we had upgraded bathroom partitions. We were able to save those petitions. They're a solid plastic petition, and we're utilizing them in the pool locker rooms now. So that's great because the petitions that are in there are from 1970. So this year, we're back to facility rental. We've got programs in our basketball gyms, both at the Nichols, excuse me, Nichols, the MECC, and the Berklin. And then we have four schools renting the pool space this year. A lot of schools are unable to use the pools that they had used in the past. We have a MECC Chilla project that's going on over there at Early Childhood Center. Yesterday was the walkthrough. Ms. Hickey and Howie Bumpis, our HVAC tech, were a part of it. The bids are due on the 29th of December. This is a very important project because for the last two years, we've been using portable air conditioners for our ESY program. So this is being funded through our SIT2 grant. Couple of summer projects that got done. HBB, MKG, we're Phase Two of our paving project that is now complete, so the whole backside of the complex is new pavement. And we did our first phase at the Nichols. They did the parking lot, the bus loop, and the drop-off loop down a part, part of the way for Tiger Drive. We had a water tower project, so we stayed away from that part because the big trucks would kind of wreak havoc on the new pavement. So we hope to do the, the remaining part of Tiger Drive next year. Over at the Berklin, we added another 10,000 square feet of grass play area. It was all parking area, a nice split-rail fence, and a basketball court on the new pavement out back there, which is great for the kids. We've just added into another competitive bid with the Green Communities project. This, this bid is the MECC. It's $117,000 lighting bid, and we won't know probably for a couple more months if we do get that. To date, we've gotten $480,000 approximately in Green Communities money for lighting at the complex, the Nichols, BMS upgrades at the Nichols and the MECC. This year, we've had a number of very, very large PPE donations from Lowe's, Ocean State Jaw Lot, and Memer. We purchased some storage bins, and we have those quite large storage bins at both of our locations that we store the PPE in. So we're in great shape, and we appreciate those donations. And then an update, as you may know, we had a leak, a sizable leak in the A Building here, Performing Arts. And right now, we're, we were able to relocate the programs into the auditorium here, the black box as well. Some hygienist testing was done today, and we're prepping for insulation and sheet rock. The way this has, we were going to do it in phases, but we've been able to push it up with the ability to relocate the programs into this space, and we hope to have that project done by the end of the holiday break. Sheet rock, painted, and new flooring. So, any questions?
Hutch, can you clarify with regards to the leak? It was not a leaky roof. It was, can you just explain what happened a little bit?
Yep, absolutely. So that was, we have four four-inch conduits that run from this building here, and they go out to East Grove, and they were in a low-lying area. We had a significant rainstorm, and the water came in through those conduits coming up into the auditorium storage room, which pretty much put an inch of water in this whole building. So that problem has been fixed, and now we're doing the abatement and the repair of all the flooring. Three feet of sheet rock in all of those spaces has been removed. Everything's been cleaned, bleached, and now having tests done by the hygienist to make sure that everything is clean before we insulate and sheet rock and get it back and running. So.
And that was an insurance claim that Fontaine Brothers is paying.
That is correct. Yep.
The company, the general contractor is paying most of the money on that.
Yep. So we, we met with multiple insurance agencies for, the contract is on-site, and Fontaine has moved it along. We didn't want to let this sit for too long. So Fontaine has taken this, and we've moved much quicker than we had anticipated, which is great. So that whole project, that will work its way out in the end, but at least we don't have any wet wall sitting there. So everything that has to be open is open, and like I said, we're hoping to start, with the hygienist test coming back tomorrow, we're hoping to start on Monday, putting sheet rock, insulation, and everything back in place.
And Hutch, what are you looking at for projects, major projects or potential projects in the future, coming, the coming years or so?
Yep. So we have, well, the MECC Chilla, which is a, a much-needed project. We also are looking at a roof on the pool. We've got a roof that has some significant leaking. Even though it's leaking into a pool, it's still an issue. And continued renovations in that locker room. Now with that space being utilized by multiple schools, we, we have the money coming in that we can do some renovations there as well. So, and, and we will go for some, some more asphalt, much-needed asphalt replacement, front side of the complex, and like I had mentioned, the remaining part of Tiger Drive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Different grant money?
Yep.
Capital planning money from the town? Is it just sort of all being put together?
Yep. So the, the pool roof will be through capital. The Green Communities money is a competitive grant. So as a town, we put in what we would like to do through Green Communities, and then the state determines whether we qualify. We've been very fortunate. We have not been turned down. Like I said, we're almost $500,000 that we've been able to utilize. The MECC upgrade would be a, upgrade all that lighting to LED, which the Nichols and the complex have. Makes a big difference. Obviously, this school is all LEDs, but hopefully, we, we get that money and we can go right through all the classrooms at the MECC, and, and we see that savings right away on our electric bill, even with the rates as low as Middleborough has. We still see a savings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for the presentation. I know, speaking of facilities, we recently put in the new kind of facility use guidelines and, and costs and all that, and I was just wondering how everything's working out, and if you've got any feedback on the, and maybe this is a pseudo Sarah question as well, but is it working out so far?
Yeah, it's working out great, Rich. I mean, we've updated. We, we had a very dated pricing list, if you will. So this, even though we're not anywhere near the higher school rates, it's producing some money that we can, we can do some things in the spaces that we rent. So actually, one thing I didn't bring up was we're going to be changing the, the chlorinator, which automatically feeds chlorine to the pool and balances our pH as well. I just, this week, got a price for upgrading that. That particular system that's in our pool now is about 25 years old. So it'll help to keep that pool with so many people in it now. The pH, we're always chasing the pH and the chlorine levels. This will help to keep that more uniform.
That's great. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just for public benefit, I know that the way the rates were before for some of the rentals, we were actually losing money because of some of the, because of the staff that we had to have on. So that's just, it's not just a profit grab type thing. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, no, no. That's, that was a much-needed thing, and obviously, I was on that with you as well. That makes a big difference for us, and, and a space like this will, will be very important as well. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Hutch?
Hutch, thank you. We appreciate. I, I do want to add something, so everyone understands. There have been many times I have gone by these buildings on the weekend, and so have members of my family, and they run into Hutch because Hutch is doing a wide variety of things on the weekend. So I really appreciate, you know, what Hutch does and how Hutch leads his, his men and women. And I just want to say you do a fantastic job, Hutch, so I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Second. Thank you.
Thanks, Hutch. Appreciate it. Next on my report, Mr. Chair, is the Reed's Annual Report. I told you last week that I'd put this on the report again, just in case anybody had any questions. It's a 24-page document. If you do have any questions, you can ask them now. I can record them, or you can certainly send them to me via email, and I can pass them on to Teresa Craig, questions that I can answer. But it's a comprehensive report on the, on the operation of the Reed's Collaborative, which we are a part of, obviously. Thank you. No questions. Okay. Next is a budget timeline update with Sarah Hickey, Business Manager.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and School Committee. I had sent out the budget detail sheets to the principals and directors on October 18th. Those are due back to me tomorrow. It's always a very exciting time when all of the spreadsheets come in. I do love spreadsheets. So it will take me about two weeks to amalgamate all the information that's going to come in, and I will have a draft of a proposed budget spreadsheet in early January. We will meet with the admin team and go over the budget requests and talk about any staffing needs. I'm looking to schedule budget subcommittee meetings the week of January 17th and January 24th. So those of you on the budget subcommittee, I will send out a, a Google form, and you just click off what days you're available, and I'll find the days that work for everybody that needs to be there. So I'm looking at budget subcommittee meetings, the 17th, the week of the 17th and the 24th, and then we, we usually need to do follow-up meetings with principals when we have questions that come up. So those would be the week of January 31st. And then Superintendent Lynch and the executive team will finalize the budget the first weeks in February, and our budget hearing is scheduled for February 17th.
This is our, sort of our usual pieces throughout the time. This is what's happened in the past. So again, thank you for putting that all together, Sarah. I'm starting to get ready.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Moving on, I just, my final item is just our, our annual reminder in the, the meeting before the holidays, that the 23rd is a release day. For students, it is a release day, early release, not a half-day. It's an early release day, and it is a teacher self-directed professional development day. So that is that day, and then we come back after New Year's weekend. So really, just over a week off this year, one of the shorter vacations that we've had in a while, but that means maybe we get out a little bit earlier in June. So that's, that concludes my report this evening, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the superintendent before we let him conclude his report? Seeing none, then I will move on. Before I get into MSBA, I was asked by Brian to read a letter, and I do so reluctantly, but I do so, and it pertains to why we met earlier tonight in executive session, to have a, start a conversation. The letter says this, "Dear Mr. Young, I write to you today to notify you and the school committee of my intent to resign from the position of Superintendent of Schools effective June 30th, 2022. This is being done for the purposes of retirement. Please know that this was a very difficult decision for me, and it is made, it has been made with mixed emotions as I very much enjoyed my tenure as superintendent and my service to the town of Middleborough and the Middleborough Public School community. As superintendent, I feel much has been accomplished to advance our school system since I signed on in July of 2015. These accomplishments were not made by me personally, but rather through the coordination and collaboration of the entire Middleborough Public School team. Our great team consists of every single employee who is committed to creating a safe, caring, and educationally stimulating environment for everybody, for every Middleborough student in every classroom every day. As my formal full-time career in education comes to a close after 39 years of service in the public education profession, I would like to thank you and all the past and present members of the school committee for the many opportunities I have been given to provide service leadership within the Middleborough Public Schools. It has truly been a labor of love, and it was signed by Brian." So the school committee had a discussion earlier, and so with that, the chair will entertain a motion to reluctantly accept the superintendent's resignation as of July. Do I second? Discussion. Go ahead, Rich. Go ahead, Rich.
Sure, I'm, I'm probably not the best person to start talking about this because I, I've been around probably the district the least amount of time, but I've just really appreciated working with you. I know it's not over today. I know we have more time, but I, I never experienced another superintendent from another district. I just consider myself really lucky to have this, have been the experience that I've had, and I can't imagine anyone else have leading this ship through the crazy waters that we've been through the past couple of years. So I didn't move or second that because I really don't want to, but I'm going to have to vote for it, I suppose. But thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair.
Theresa.
Well, this is my third superintendent as a parent in this district about seven years ago. In fact, today, seven years ago, on my Facebook memories, was a post asking people to attend school committee meetings because we were having some struggles. That was just about prior to your time, starting with us, Mr. Lynch. And as a parent in district, I just want to say that I'm extraordinarily grateful for the time that you've given us. It's been quite a road, but you got us to some really great things, which we're sitting in a brand-new building, and I know that you had a lot to do with that. But beyond that, the culture in this district has changed drastically in the last seven years, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Theresa. Go ahead, Rich.
Well, so I'm not going to say anything new, but when I was new to the school committee, I had a lot of questions about everything, and Brian was always, you know, quick to answer and help me out with anything I needed to know. He made the position here very transparent, and I do appreciate, I know Brian's worked very hard, he loves the school district, and I, we're definitely going to miss him, but I think he's, he's earned his retirement, and I wish him the best.
Thank you, Rich. I would just say that there is plenty of time to have these conversations over the next six months, and I look forward to them. But I will always, always be reminded of, one of the great times I had was I had the opportunity last time to lead the search for a superintendent, and the school committee gave me that authority to start. I met with Mr. Brand again, and we met with a group of students in the old high school in sort of the, the separate lunch area to talk with captains of sports teams, leaders of programs, and a wide variety of students who were considered leaders by their peers. And I had one young lady stand up to me and say, "When you choose a superintendent, please choose someone who wants to be a superintendent in Middleborough and doesn't just want to be a superintendent." I've never forgotten that conversation, and I've always maintained we found that person. And so I am very thankful for that young lady, and I'm thankful for Brian. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you all very much.
That will be obviously a topic for future meeting as we move forward. But MSBA building project, where the parking lot was turned over, so we received that. As Hutch said, there are some pieces that are still being worked on and fixed due to the conduit problem. There are still pieces that will continue, but as we have said before, we are, we're not on schedule, obviously, because COVID, but we are under budget and continue to be under budget. We are going through punch lists now. There are still pieces that still have to be worked out back as far as the tennis courts and the basketball courts and the additional field, but those are the pieces that are working out. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question on the, the building project. I know even today, you occasionally still see posts about, you know, the track and, you know, when can we get on it? And I know, I know, obviously, it's a new track, it's a very expensive track, we're going to have some slightly different rules, but I was just wondering what the timeframe would be for that to be open for public?
So just so everyone knows, the selectmen through Mr. Noon sent me a note, and that was Tuesday. It was obviously afterwards, after we had set the agenda and everything. But what, I sent a note to the superintendent, so the superintendent, myself, Hutch, Paul, and Ryan are going to meet, and at the next meeting, we'll have it, and I'll also send that to the selectmen. So we'll have an outline of what's, when it's going to happen.
Excellent.
But I would caution people to just remind them that the track isn't going to be open all the time because it can't, because partially because we have lots of students using the track for a wide variety of things, and we can't have outside people coming in and using when students are. So it's going to be limited. We're going to try to do it as much as we possibly can and open it up whenever we can. But I just want to make sure that people understand that.
And through you, Mr. Chair, one of, one of the major pieces was that last piece, those, those security cameras that are out in that area that, that we would really like to have in place and operational prior to opening the, the facility to the public. So that, that wire was being tracked. Hutch, I don't know where that stands exactly right now. I know that Signet, Levangial Electric was putting in and redoing the wires, the conduit, and then Signet was coming in and installing the cameras and making them operational. So that's another piece that we'll have in the conversation about when we open it up. I know there's some signage also that's supposed to go on the, on the, on the wall, basically telling restrictions, no bicycles, no strollers, all those basic understandings, but some people need to read that before. And, and then there are those that might say, it doesn't say any bicycle, doesn't say no bicycles anywhere. So I just want to make sure that we have that, our ducks in a row with regard to that. So, but we'll come back, we'll come back with the report the next meeting.
We'll have the conversation next. Excuse me. I'll start to reach out to people, so just so everyone knows.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any questions about that? Any questions else about the building project? With that, Chair wants to stand a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second? Just so everyone knows, it has to do with fundraisers and warrants. All the, yeah, Rich, you have a question?
Sorry, just under discussion, I was just curious if, I, I recognize the Hannaford Helps donation that's...
That's a separate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm on other. Okay. Sorry, nothing.
We will get that, to that next. That was one thing I'm going to bring up.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So I did want to point out the, the donations. So two things. These are the McClutty family and Hannaford's Help constantly donate to us over the years, and so we want to thank them. The McClutty family continues to donate every single year. I did ask if the McClutty family wanted to come. They are living away from town, and so they did not, but we do want to thank them for their fine donation. They constantly donate to the Henry B. Berklin, and that is a...
It's a fifteen-hundred-dollar donation.
Each and every year, so we appreciate that. Anything else before I move on? With that, I would be remiss, my old school committee member, Brian Givernoni, if I did not mention that, at this holiday time, so we wish everybody a happy and safe holiday time. There were many an occasion that Brian and I, and Brian, who was here on, before us, were always reached out to, especially at the holiday time, by Terry Page. And Terry unfortunately passed away a couple of years ago, but at the holiday time, I always think about her and think about all the wonderful things she did and the nice things. She would always send over a basket to the school committee, and that was really nice and wonderful, and I think about that a lot.
And she made nice sweaters.
She did. Brian got a sweater. That was fantastic.
I had to have refit a couple of times. And she told me she didn't think she had enough yarn.
So with that, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Happy holidays, everyone.